Okay. Good evening. Tonight is Tuesday, November 29th. This is the Hanson Select Board meeting. This is being taped by Whitman Hanson Cable Access Television, and I would ask you to please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, with liberty and justice for all. Okay. And we are going to, I guess, Mrs. Ryan, I'll have you do the announcements, and then we're going to adjourn to executive session. Yep?
Okay. The annual holiday festival will take place on the town green on Saturday, December 3rd, 2022, at 4:30 p.m. to 7:30 p.m., with the festival being 5:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m., and fireworks commencing at 7:00 p.m. Upcoming meetings: Select Board, December 6th, 2022; Select Board, December 13th, 2022; and Select Board, January 10th, 2023.
Okay. Thank you very much. And with that, we are going to adjourn to executive session pursuant to Open Meeting Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A2, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel, or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel, Administrative Professionals Union. And executive session pursuant to Open Meeting Law, we're being recorded right now, Chapter 30A, Section 21A3, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body, and the chair so declares, Administrative Professionals Union; and also executive session pursuant to Open Meeting Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A8, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the public body, and the chair so declares, Robert O'Brien. I will entertain a motion to go into executive session.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Roll call.
Aye.
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 Okay. We are now in executive session. We will come out of executive session and go into our regular open meeting agenda. Okay. Welcome back to our November 29th meeting. And, Mrs. Ryan, with that, I will turn it over to you.
Town of Hanson Public Hearing Notice. In accordance with Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 40, Section 56, a public hearing will be held in the Selectman's Meeting Room, Town Hall, Hanson, Massachusetts, on Tuesday, November 29th, at 7:00 p.m. for allocating the percentage of tax levy to be borne by each class of property for fiscal 2023. All interested taxpayers are encouraged to present oral or written information on their views. This is a necessary hearing, which must be held prior to the certification of the fiscal 2023 tax rate.
Okay. And with that, we are going to turn it over to Denise Alexander in our assessor's office, who is going to walk us through the classification hearing.
Good evening. I am Denise Alexander, the Assistant Assessor in Hanson. For anyone that doesn't know me, I'm here tonight with our Assessor Appraiser, Lee Gomash, and Board of Assessor, Trish O'Kane, and Josh Adams. So if anyone would like a copy of the classification booklet, we have extras if anybody needs them. Just raise your hand and let us know. Before I begin, though, I would like to inform the Select Board that the following figures on this presentation are estimates as we're waiting for our values to be finalized and sent to DOA for certification. With that, I'm going to turn to page 2. And on page 2, these are the required actions by the Select Board tonight. There are three of them. And the first one is whether or not to adopt a uniform tax rate for Hanson or a split tax rate. The second one is whether or not to adopt a residential exemption. And the third is whether or not to adopt a small commercial exemption. The purpose of the classification hearing is to determine whether the Town of Hanson will continue to utilize a single tax rate for all classes of property or to split the tax rate, shifting the burden towards the commercial industrial off of the residential class. We are here to present the information compiled by our office for allocating the percentage of tax levy borne by each class of property. And on page 3, these are, I'm just, we're showing you, oh, sorry about that. I don't know why that happened.
Let you far down.
Yep. So on page 3, we're showing you some proposed shifts in the tax rate. So if we, if it was to be a split rate, you can see that opens, commercial, industrial, personal property, the tax rate does increase with the shifts, and the residential tax rate would be going down. And on page, the next page, which is page 4, it shows you a pie chart. So, you know, Hanson's primarily residential. We're 93% now residential. And between the commercial, industrial, and personal property, it's about 7%. So this is, you know, a residential, primarily residential town. So on page 5 and 6, I'm showing you here detailed dollar values, dollar amounts that would be affected by the changes in the tax rate shifting or by the uniform tax rate, as you can see in the top. These are average one-family homes. We used average residential dwelling values and average commercial industrial values. So based on the average homes and values, you'll see the tax rate changes. And they do go up with the split. And then on page, page 6, it goes on further. We went up to 25% to show you scenarios.
What is CIP?
That's commercial, industrial, personal property. It's just a short way to, a short way for us to put it. And then Hanson has such a small rate of commercial property that adopting a split rate would shift the larger burden onto the commercial industrial properties. Hanson's Select Board have always voted to maintain a single tax rate for that reason. And usually, a split is usually not looked at until the residential gets to be, like, less than 80%. And the commercial, industrial, personal property is, you know, more than 20%. That's when you usually would see or think about, you know, splits normally.
And I think, I think historically, because we know we want to try to attract businesses and retain the business, the few businesses we have, we haven't wanted to do a shift and unduly burden the few businesses that have decided to be here.
Right. Exactly. I agree with you on that one. So the Board of Assessors have recommended a uniform tax rate for FY 2023. And your first vote of the evening will be whether or not to adopt a uniform tax rate or a split rate.
Okay. I will entertain, so that the actions by the Select Board are page 2.
I have one question.
Oh, yes. Sorry.
With all these different splits that you're talking about, the 1, 5, 20, 10, 15, 25, whatever, is the total amount the town gets the same?
The values, so, yes, the levy never changes. It's never going to change.
Okay. So it's just where it comes from?
It's just where, which, yeah. Yeah. Which property, which causes the burden we go onto.
Any other questions for the Board of Assessors? And, you know, do you guys mind, just because I think people think that we're willingly coming up with these figures, like, you know, that you guys randomly come up with the tax rates? And, you know, can you just give us a little bit of a background on the rules of engagement, on, you know, on who you're talking to and dealing with to set the rate and that type? Just like, you know, I know that this is a very complex process, but I'm basically asking you, can you tell us in, like, five sentences or less kind of thing, you know?
So basically, just to start from the beginning, sales really push our values to be adjusted each year. And, you know, whether it's, you know, residential to commercial. We do have a commercial appraiser that does the commercial adjustments and the permits as well. I do do the cyclical, the residential permits here. So as those adjustments go in, we get, you know, the values are changing, constantly changing. So at the end, we have to, we have to strategize the sales in ratios, the sale-to-assessment ratios. And, you know, the sales are really what's, in its class, is what's really kind of pushing to where everything will kind of adjust as so. It's a complex system, and it's a computerized, what do they call it? Algorithm. It's, you know, we have an awesome appraisal company that sets it up. So, but with that, the tax rate would, it's based on the actual values, the total values at the end of the year, divided by, I think it's by the clap, by the number of parcels now. I'm trying to figure it out. I did it the other day. Don't have it in front of me.
So in order to get the, a single tax rate, you take the total value of the town, you take the levy?
Mm-hmm.
Where we have to take the levy and divide it by the total value of the town, and that will give you the single rate? And then if you're going to shift from there, you would shift that.
And these are standardly accepted practices that are required by the state in order to do this?
Yes.
I guess that's what I'm saying.
Department of Revenue.
They receive us on everything.
Okay.
And we do go to the Department of Revenue. They have fantastic financial tools in there as well. And we can, you know, put our, you know, our scenarios in there as well.
Okay. Did anybody else?
Can I just say something about the levy? Because it came up at the classification hearing from where I work. A lot of people think that, you know, we can just adjust.
Yes. That's why I was asked to do that.
So we'll do the levy limit. So you, and everybody knows about Proposition 2 and 1/2. So you take last year's levy, and you can add 2 and 1/2% to that. So that's Proposition 2 and 1/2. So people will say, my value went up more than 2 and 1/2%. That's not Proposition 2 and 1/2.
Right.
So it's the, it's the...
The mass.
Yeah. So you've got the last year's levy plus 2 and 1/2%, and then any new growth. So that's something that hasn't been taxed before. Or something that was exempt that's now not, or new construction. Then that gets added to it. And then any overrides or dead exclusions that get added to that. And that is your levy limit. So...
That's super helpful. Yep.
And the base for next year.
It's the base for next year. So again, this came up at my classification hearing. No, you can't, we can't just pick how much without knowing the taxes. So...
Okay. That's very helpful. Thank you.
It's regulated by the Department of Revenue.
Okay. Did anybody?
And yet that tax rate went down.
Actually, yes. And we'll show you that on the next, you'll see that on...
Oh, did I go too early?
Usually, when the values still come up like that, the tax rate goes down.
Okay. So did you need us to take a vote?
Yes.
Okay. So the first one is selecting the residential factor for fiscal year 2023. The Board of Assessors has consistently recommended a factor 1, meaning the tax rate should not be split in order to shift more tax burden to the commercial class. So I will entertain a motion to not split.
To not split. Yeah.
Okay. That's the motion you're making, and you're seconding it. Okay. Great. Any further discussion? Okay. All in favor? Okay. Great. And are we good to move on to this?
Yep. We can move on to page number 7.
Okay.
And on page 7, you can average value comparisons. And that's where you can see that the average single family, the average residential condo, and the average commercial industrial, how the values have been creeping up through the past few years, and how the tax rate has also gone down in the past two, three years as well. And then on page 8, it's just another way of looking at it in the bar graph. So it shows you the increase in the values. And then you can see that the tax bills are... You really can't see the tax rate there because the bars are so small.
Yeah.
But, yeah, but they, but they have gone down, as the previous slide showed.
Well, the tax rate went down, but...
But because the assessed value went up.
The tax bill has gone up considerably.
Yeah. Based on, yeah.
Okay. So will Hanson adopt a residential exemption? And what would a residential exemption be?
So the residential exemption is for property owners of Class 1 properties that own and occupy property. A percentage is applied, an exempt dollar amount of the value from the value that is exempt from taxation. Typically, it's adopted in communities that have a higher rate of rental properties, like Boston, Cambridge, Cape Cod. If it's primarily, or if there's an abundance of rentals, you would see a residential exemption go in. Historically, Hanson has opted not to adopt the residential tax exemption. And the Board of Assessors...
Can I ask a question? Who gets exempted?
So it would be like if you had a high rental community, you would give it to the ones that aren't renters, like the ones that actually live in their homes year-round.
To incentivize people to be residents.
Owner-occupied.
So owner-occupied.
Owner-occupied.
Yeah. Owner-occupied.
Yeah.
Okay. So our next question is, will Hanson adopt a residential exemption? And again, the Board of Assessors has consistently recommended that a residential exemption not be adopted. And traditionally, the Select Board has gone along with that. I will entertain a motion to not adopt the residential exemption. Okay. And, okay, great. All in favor? Aye. Okay. Great. And then we're on to the small business.
Yeah. The last vote of the evening. So it's for this, whether or not to adopt the small commercial exemption. Legislation 1994 added an option to the property tax classification law. It is of the Select Board to decide if the small commercial exemption will be adopted by the Town of Hanson. Adoption of this provision does not guarantee that the reduction in taxes will be passed on to the small business owner as the exemption is applied to the real estate. For example, assume that Shaw's Plaza is, value is under $1 million, and that each employee, each business is employing an average of 10 employees during 2022. The Plaza would qualify to receive the exemption, not the individual small business owners. And according to Department of Revenue, Department, I'm sorry, Department of Employment and Training, Hanson has 49 businesses which would qualify for the small commercial exemption if they were under $1 million. 29 businesses occupy the properties, yet they don't own them, and would only benefit if the property owner passed the savings on to the business owner. Only 20 business owners would benefit from that exemption. And historically, Hanson has opted not to adopt the small commercial exemption. And the Board of Assessors recommends to not adopt the small commercial exemption as it will shift the burden to the remaining commercial industrial properties.
Okay. So our third and final question this evening is, will Hanson adopt a small business exemption? And I am looking, the Board of Assessors has consistently recommended that the small business exemption not be adopted. And again, historically, the Select Board has voted to not adopt the small business exemption. I will entertain a motion.
So moved.
To not adopt the small business exemption? Okay.
Second.
Okay. All in favor? Great. Now...
Lastly, I just wanted to notify the Select Board that there isn't, we have an estimated, and it's only estimated, excess levy capacity that we're to, we're required to let the Select Board know what that is. And it's $77,074. It doesn't require a vote. It's just notification as part of the classification hearing requirement. But unfortunately, we will not be able to close the hearing tonight due to the fact that our values have not been finalized. Once our values are finalized, we'll be able to reconvene and let the Select Board know and give you the actual excess levy capacity and the actual values.
Okay. So do we close the hearing and reopen it? Or do we recon, I'm not sure what the protocol is there on that one.
I think we reconvene.
Vote to reconvene, maybe?
For December 6th.
Okay. I will entertain a motion to reconvene. I think it's probably similar to what we had to do for the, I'm going to go out on a limb and say this, to town meeting. It's very similar to that. Okay. So we will, I will entertain a motion to continue the hearing to December 6th.
So moved.
At what time shall we continue? We have quite a few executive session items. So might we prevail?
You should take minutes.
Yeah.
You should take minutes.
5:45. Meaning it will take five minutes.
Then we probably should, oh, that's a great idea. 5:45? Is everybody able to make it at 5:45? Would that work for you guys? Okay. Great.
Or just do it at 6:00 and let them go.
No. I like the 5:45 because, yeah. That's a good idea. Okay. So I will, so did I have a...
Yes.
Did I have a second?
Yep.
Okay. 5:45 on December 6th. Continue the hearing. All in favor? Fantastic. Thank you very much. You were very informative, as usual.
Thank you. And I just want to say, on behalf of the Board of Assessors in our office, we'd like to thank our financial team, Claude Hassett, the town accountant especially, and Treasurer Director, Gene Sullivan, for all their diligent work this year.
Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. And very patiently waiting in the wings is Jake Wheeling, Troop 34, to present his Eagle Scout project for the Senior Center gazebo. Good evening, Jake, and thank you for your patience.
You're welcome. So hi, my name is Jake Wheeling from Troop 34 in Hanson, as I already mentioned. I have an Eagle Scout project for fixing up the gazebo at the, is it the Senior Center or the Council on Ager?
Well, they're used interchangeably.
I know they're used interchangeably. I just didn't know the exact. But besides that, there was, there's the green gazebo that's behind it, and it's pretty, it's rundown, but it's not entirely broken up to where it can be just, it can be fixed. It's not completely, just replace it. So mostly, it's just the trim pieces, which we have, I have most of it all written down and what I need to get. And it just needs to be cut and put on there.
Okay.
And then with the new painted pieces, I was planning on putting those on now, and then maybe in the spring, coming back to repaint it. Because obviously, if you were to paint it now, it gets too cold. It wouldn't harden. So I was going to go back in the spring and try to make it look a lot better with paint. But I'm trying to get everything all structurally and everything all back in, hopefully, by the end of the month.
Now, what's your deadline?
My deadline is January 28th, the latest. So I'd say January 7th, 27th, because that's when I have to turn my paperwork in.
Okay. So are you able to do work after your deadline?
I, we were able to discuss something about a prerequisite, where I have enough, I have it done to where...
Like a substantial amount?
Basically, to where it's just seasonal, to where it has to be done. We're trying to work on for that.
Okay. Great. And how are you going to fundraise, Jake?
So we were, I was planning on fundraising with our troop because we already have our Scout accounts, which have, for campouts and everything. But I still have enough, I've summoned that, and I've been able to, we've been bottling canned fundraisers, the transfer station, we've been looking through that. So I was thinking of trying to use some of that, use my Scout account, plus other various donations I can probably get for my family and all that. But besides that, I never got, came out to too much needing.
Okay.
It's mostly just the trim and then some other decorative things, and then the bench, which there's some broken pieces. But then there's some structural pieces holding it up that are also somewhat cracked. So it's just a figure of getting the full estimate on those sizes. Because I have the estimate on how much wood I would need and all that, but not the sizes and how much I can cut from each. So all I would have to do is just cut it, paint it. And what I ideally want to do is just have a date to just go down there, take off what's, needs to be replaced, and then put the new one on there. And then leave that as is. Well, the paint's already hardened on the new stuff. And then when it hits spring and then starts not being painting weather, I should say, to fully paint the rest of it and fully finish the project.
You kind of lucked out with the weather. I mean, you know, I'm not suggesting you paint it, but to do anything outside, you kind of lucked out. Especially for a January something deadline, you could have really been in the middle of, like, massive snowstorms and everything else.
Yeah. Definitely.
Yeah. Did anybody have any...
No. Just to say thank you to Jake, where I'm the liaison down there, and I'm down there two or three days a week anyways. The people that used the Senior Center were not really able to go out back at all this summer because it was so bad.
Because the gazebo was so bad? Because what was so bad?
The gazebo and the benches that Jake's talking about. So I mean, I really appreciate him doing this. And, you know, I know he's coming up on the deadline with the painting and stuff. But, and I know he's, you must be a little nervous coming in front of this group. Being a liaison for the parks and fields, the Boy Scouts are now involved with the cans at the transfer station. And that's where a lot of the money is going to come from, is that they have the month of October and November, or November, December. But, you know, and plus, there's plenty of help, plenty of adults that are going to be there. And I just think this is, it's great. And I know that, you know, people down there really appreciate it. Because this is one of those things that's going to be used a lot.
Yeah.
You know, some of the other stuff in the past that we've done, trails and all that stuff, this is going to be used, you know, basically, May through, you know, depending on the weather, late November. So I mean, I can't thank you enough, Jake, for doing this.
I think it's great. We love us some Troop 34. We look forward to seeing you up on the wall of the Eagle Scouts up there. Did anybody have any other questions?
No. Just another comment. I mean, you, I just love, you're very well spoken. You have a great plan. I love the enthusiasm around it. I just, I can't thank you enough as well. You're doing a great job. And to get up here and do this, just, and carry yourself very well.
Right. Thank you.
Well done.
Anything else, guys? All right. I will entertain a motion to approve Jake Wheeling's project up at the Senior Center. Okay. Wow. You're really anxious on that.
Oh, second. I'm sorry.
I used to be...
Any further discussion?
...involved in Troop 34 years ago.
All in favor?
They never made it to Eagle.
Yep.
And I wish they did.
Yep.
All right. Well, thanks so much, Jake, and you're going to make a lot of seniors happy. And we appreciate that.
Thank you.
All right. We hope the good weather holds up for you.
I hope so. I hope so. If at worst, it's still just taking off, deal one, bring it on for now, or at worst, we have it all done, put it on when we end and paint it when this is put on.
All right, thank you so much.
Thanks.
Take care. Okay, discussion for 902 Main Street.
I don't think there is a lot, but the email came in, I put it in a packet.
Yeah. We talked about it at the next meeting, I think she forgot that, she presented...
This is the email right here?
Yeah.
So it's just the Hanson Housing Authority?
It basically says, um, Hanson Housing Authority doesn't...
Oh, okay, all right, so if you will recall, we, at the, one of our last meetings, 902 Main Street had come up, the town had a right of first refusal because it's affordable housing. We had asked Ms. Green to circle back with the Housing Authority, just to make sure that they did not want us to exercise our right of first refusal, and that they didn't want to purchase it. She's confirmed that they are not interested in that. So with that, I will entertain a motion to allow that property to be sold and to have the town not exercise its right of first refusal.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Okay, great. Let's see, what is next? I mixed everything up in my...
Except for donations.
Yep, okay, so we have a donation in memory of Ernie Jutress by Mary and David Ryan. I will entertain a motion to accept.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Great. Point Town Administrator as Municipal Representative to attend Women, Hanson Regional School Committee Meeting on December 7th, 2022. I will entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Okay, fantastic. Approve open session minutes of May 24th, July 26th, August 23rd, and November 10th.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, all in favor? All right, and one-day liquor licenses, as printed in our agenda. I will entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Wow, okay, this group is getting rowdy tonight. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and Ms. Green unfortunately is ill and cannot be with us, so with that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn to wage and personnel.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Okay, great.
Is that, is that the session?
That's wage and personnel, which is Mr., oh, did you want the gavel? I know you...
No, no, no.
You get into it.
You only do it because you have it.
Okay, all right.
Only because you have it. When you got it on the table, I have to bang the gavel.
You better do it.
Oh, yeah, no, take your time. Do we want to do a recess or anything before we get started, or jump right into it?
Let's just go for it.
You good, Lynn? All right, we're going to open the meeting Tuesday, November 29th, 7:35 is when we're actually opening it up. This is the wage and personnel meeting, and we are here to discuss the IT Director 2% salary adjustment. And we'll have Ms. Green to talk about it, so.
I would suggest tabling that, where both Lisa and Steve are out to maybe our next, well, maybe not the 6th, come on the 13th.
But do we really need to...
That means we've got to come on the 13th.
Do we really need to table it? Because I think Steve explained it at our last meeting, but we just couldn't take it up because we hadn't posted to discuss it.
We posted it.
And now we've posted it, and it's, it's a 2% salary adjustment, because he was saying, that he was due a cost of living increase along with everybody else, and, and we said, well, we'd love to give that to you, but we didn't post to talk about it.
Yeah, so this was more of a housekeeping issue, and it actually something I think needed an explanation. So if people are comfortable, I would accept, yeah, okay, so I would accept a motion to increase the Director IT line item by 2% for the salary adjustment.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, good motion, second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, unanimous?
And just to be clear, that's on his recently adjusted salary?
Yes.
Okay.
The one that was voted on in open session of the Select Board.
And it's not retroactive, then?
For, to July 1st.
To July 1st, okay.
It's retroactive from July.